I don't know, I need to go through the emails.
I'm going to call a regular meeting of the Board of Alderman to order on Tuesday, September 23rd, 2025 at 7:43 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber, which has been duly noticed in two places, including the city's website in accordance with the requirements of RSA 91A. The prayer will be offered this evening by City Clerk Dan Healy, and Alderman Thibodeau will lead us in the pledge of the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance, please.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Timmons. Alderman Moran. Alderman Thibodeau.
Here.
Alderman Goveya.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Clements.
Here.
Alderman Senate.
I am here. I'm participating remotely via Zoom due to an illness. I am alone in the room, and I am able to hear everybody in the chamber.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderman Klee.
Here.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Here.
Thirteen present, two absent.
Thank you. Also joining us this evening is Mayor Jim Dantus and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, Madam President. I wanted to talk a little about the thing that we all have been thinking about for the last three days, which is the attack by the gunman on these people down at the Sky Meadow Country Club on Saturday night. And this gunman came in, shot three people, although the reports at the beginning were confusing, but we now know that he broke into the restaurant at the Sky Meadow Country Club, shot three people, including fatal to Robert DeCesar, and a serious injury to another person who was in Mass General in critical condition, and a third person who was also shot. Now, at the country club, of course, there is, and in that building, there is the restaurant that was attacked by the gunman, but also the event space where there was a wedding going on for 150 people. And when the shots began and rang out, and people began to realize what was happening, you know, all of those people fled from the building, and creating a very massive crisis situation. And I went that night, I was working with Emily Marticello, the emergency management director, and went down to where a lot of these events, in terms of the response, were taking place, which was at the Spit Brook Fire Station, and then subsequently at the Tara, or the hotel, the Sheraton. And I, you know, I can't say enough about how effective the response by all of our people was. You know, first of all, the police department responded immediately, and was able, then they were able to apprehend the suspect within a half an hour or so. But there was a lot of other confusion that was going on, because not only were there injured people, the people that had been shot, but there were also all the people who fled this, fled the, fled the building, fled the wedding, some of whom Emily tells me did not have shoes on because they, because they were dancing on the dance floor in the wedding reception. And so, all of the organization regarding handling all of those people and determining who was injured, because some people had been injured in the rush to leave, it was all handled by the police department, the fire department, who was very involved, and emergency management, and many other agencies, police agencies from around the area, fire departments, the hospitals, many others were involved. But the quick and effective response was, in addition to just the law enforcement part of it, was in, was a result of the planning and practicing that Ms. Marticello had been doing with the police and fire departments regarding shooter incidents. And a lot of their work had been centered around the idea that there could be an attack at a school, but they were able to easily adapt that approach to this situation. So as a result, people were, the bus system was involved, people were able, were transferred first, the people who were not critically injured, were transferred first to the Spit Brook, Spit Brook Road Fire Station where they gathered. The police department was able to separate those who had witnessed anything, eyewitness, as opposed to just hearing things. And then they, those people were taken to the police station and interviewed. Everyone else was ultimately then transferred to the, to the hotel, where we had a reunification effort, that's what it's called. And we had many people working there, talking with each of these, you know, hundred and some people, finding out if they had a way to get home. Many of them were from out of state, a lot of them from Massachusetts, finding if they had a way home. If they didn't, arranging transportation for them to get home. In addition, determining who was really traumatized by all of this, and who might need some immediate help. And all of this took place, you know, really without a hitch, and took place as a result of all of the work and the dedication of the people that worked for the city, again, the police department, the fire department, public health, everybody was there. And I mean, I can't name everyone that was down there, because there are so many people, but some of the people that you would certainly recognize were Emily Marticello, of course, Megan Karen from my office was there the whole time, Tim Cummings was there, Kim Bernard, who is the lead public health nurse, was there the whole time, Latania Musioli, who's the housing person, was there, and many others. So, everybody worked hard, they were there one or two, one or two in the morning, and just the whole thing was really impressive. So we, you know, I, and I'm sure you really appreciate it. Now, the police have continued to investigate, they're really on this like full-time. Right now, we, they have identified publicly a couple of the victims, Mr. DeCesar and the gentleman who was critically injured, at least he's been identified in Facebook. But right now, they've not identified two people that I haven't mentioned yet, which were heroes on the site. So what happened is, after some of the initial shots were fired, one man at the restaurant tackled the shooter, and another man hit him with a, with a chair, a stool, knocking the gun loose, injuring him, so that he, he, the shooter, had to flee. And someone else was able, I guess, to pick up the gun and kind of throw it over the balcony or something, and that ended the devastation. But a lot more people could have been injured if it had not been for these heroic efforts. Now, right now, they haven't been identified, those people, publicly identified. As time goes on, I'm sure they will be, and we will, you know, want to honor them along with a lot of other federal government, the state government, everybody's going to want to give them their thanks. But many times, I believe, we've all been asked, since this happened, you know, how do we feel about this? And, I mean, I have to say that I think sadness is the, is the predominant emotion. We have a very safe community here, and we've discussed that many times, thanks to the efforts of many people, very low crime rate. And yet, this happens in, you know, a place like Nashua. And we, I feel sadness for the victims, for the families that we know are really suffering, for the person who's down at Mass General, for the DeCesar family, everyone who's been, just whose lives have been totally altered by this whole thing. And we just want to come together, I think, as a community, and continue to hopefully support everybody who was affected by this in such a negative way. And one thing I think we do, we can communicate to the outside world, I mean, this keeps happening over and over and over again around the country, some of them more serious than this. I mean, as I've said before, one person is too much, and so three people were, were shot. But some places, you know, it's 30 or 50 or whatever, so I can't even imagine what that would be like. But sadness seems to be the, I mean, it's, I think, the principal emotion, and hopefully, over time, we can sort of assimilate it, and hopefully, this, we can prevent this from happening again. But again, before I conclude on this, I just want to say the people that were working on this were incredibly effective, incredibly dedicated, and we know, we owe a real debt of gratitude to all of them for organizing, you know, a very effective response to a very tragical, tragic incident. And, Madam President, just, I just was, just maybe mention one other thing, the, two other things, that the, there are a series of meetings, two meetings, one in two successive weeks with downtown business owners regarding the problem of the unhoused homeless population downtown. I think we will come up with some steps related to that, that can help improve the situation. Again, the police department has already begun with daily patrols, 16 hours a day, stopping in and talking to businesses and the like, business owners. I'm optimistic that that will have a, have a positive effect. But other steps, which you've heard about, we, we might be able to take, and I think we will take, to improve that situation. And finally, Madam President, I did want to mention that the Budget Committee passed a resolution, R-25198, I think it is, or recommended for passage tonight, having to do with the use of $6 million of surplus to help with the tax rate. I believe that got a unanimous support, and I just endorse that effort, and I assume people will support that tonight, and we can move on to try to run city government effectively and efficiently as possible. And that's all I have, Madam President.
Let's tell the remarks for the mayor. Alderman Lopez.
Yeah, I just didn't want it to be overlooked. All of those community services and city departments, a lot of them organized and instigated during this mayor's term, and I want to give him credit for the preparation that he did, because this really could have been a much greater disaster, with people panicking, people feeling fear, and, you know, a lot of the really good things that we saw coming out of this were because, under Mayor Dantus's leadership, we've had a plan, and we've been preparing. And I would also certainly credit the leadership in the police department as well, for being so effectively prepared, and the fire department. So, you know, there's a lot of leadership here in the local community, I just want to acknowledge. I would differ personally, that sadness is the only thing people are feeling. I think there's a lot of fear as well, as the illusions that people might have had about our safety, or, you know, mortality, I guess, gets tripped away when something unexpected like this happens right in our backyard. And I think we may go back and forth over Second Amendment debates and that kind of stuff, but I think we can all agree that we really need to invest in mental health supports and mental health funding, not just to try to preempt crises like this from happening, but also to help people deal with trauma. So if anybody's listening tonight and is experiencing any kind of a mental health crisis, or is feeling overwhelmed, you can call or text 988, and you'll get somebody, they can talk to you, they can help you understand what you're feeling. If you're concerned about other people, reach out, pass this information on to them. Thank you.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, I just want to personally thank the police department, the fire department, the AMR, and all of mutual aid and other people that supported that response. They do train all the time with the school department on schools, so that they can react quickly. We've, because of the actions of this board, we have installed security in our schools that's second to none in the, in the United States. And, but, something can happen, and they train all the time, and the response is immediate. So, kudos to all the training they do, and, and we need to continue to support that.
Recognition period.
None.
Reading minutes of previous meetings, there being no objection, I'll declare their minutes of the regular Board of Alderman meeting of August 12th, 2025, be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons. We have, without objection, I will suspend the rules to allow for a communication that was received after the agenda was prepared.
Communication has been received from Alderman at Large, Alderman Melbourne Moran, regarding explanation of absence for 9/23/2025 BOA meeting.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file.
I object.
So noted. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. No one has signed up. Communications requiring final approval.
None.
Petitions.
None.
Nominations, appointments, and elections.
None.
Reports of committees, there being no objection, I'll declare the report of the August 20th, 2025 Finance Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the August 21st, 2025 Planning and Economic Development Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll suspend the rules to allow for the oral report of the Budget Review Committee meeting held Monday night regarding proposed resolution, R-25198. Alderman Dowd.
Yes, last night, we had a meeting of the Budget Committee, we passed three pieces of legislation. The only one on tonight's agenda is R-25198, applying the fund balance to reduce the tax rate, and that was passed unanimously. The other two were R-25197, which is a housing authority, and you watched the meeting from last night, you'll see Director Sullivan answer all the questions, and gave a great presentation on, on that pilot program. Also, R-25206, on the key, money for the KEIF auditorium analysis, and that passed as well.
That concludes your report.
Yes.
Thank you. Confirmation of mayor's appointments.
None.
Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of R-25-196, relative to the transfer of $15,000 from Department 162, Street Lighting Account 54100 Electricity, to Department 159, Hydrants Fire Protection Account 54835, hydrant fees.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-25196 by roll call, please.
You've heard the motion, is there a discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Goveya.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clements.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire. Thirteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 25196 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-25-198, establishing the use of fund balance for tax rate.
Alderman Dowd.
I'd like to make, like a motion for final passage of R-25198 by roll call.
Heard the motion, discussion on that motion. Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to amend R-25198 by raising the amount that we apply to the tax rate from $6 million to $9 million, and I'd like to speak to it.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you. I am on the Budget Committee. I passed it last night, I was at the meeting, we had a discussion about it. I did some more thinking about it today. I looked at the NRO that dictates how much we can have in the unassigned fund balance. And I think in these times, we can give more, and I think we should give more. So, to do the math for everybody, because of the general fund appropriations that we have approved, we need to keep the fund balance at $36,107,286. The motion I've made to add $3 million towards the tax rate would bring the fund balance down to $38,117,688, which would be at 10 and 1/2%. So still above the amount, to adhere to the local ordinance, and it gives a little bit more to the taxpayer. And I'd like to make a motion to amend that.
Motion is to amend. Discussion. Alderman Thibodeau.
Thank you, Madam President. To have the meeting just last night, and then spring this today, I would say this needs to go back to committee then, because it wasn't discussed in committee to amend it. So that's what, that's what, I'm not going to make that motion, but, because maybe other people have questions or concerns on it, but I think it should go back to talking then.
Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. I had a similar reaction, that I would have liked that run by our new CFO, instead of taking Alderman Sullivan's math at face value. While I appreciate the idea that we would want to give more, we did have a conversation about what that would look like, and how that could potentially make the tax rate much higher the next year. So I will not be supporting this without more information from city staff.
CFO Enright is on Zoom.
Oh, great. Can we get her response?
We can ask. Ms. Enright?
Hello.
Hello.
Good evening. Yes, the question at hand is what the amount is allowed, the amount, the 10% appropriation, the 10% amount that is required according to the NRO would be $36,107. What is being recommended, the $6 million, would give us an 11.4% unassigned fund balance of $41,117,000. So those, that is the fact, that is the situation that we're, we're anticipating. These are unaudited, obviously.
I'm sorry, could I follow up?
Alderman Kelly.
Sorry, maybe I can better restate my question. So I appreciate that, I had those numbers from last night. What would be the effect of the amendment that was just recommended or put forward?
Thank you. So the effect would be the excess of unassigned fund balance would be $2 million instead of $5 million.
Can I follow up?
Yes.
And what happens if we don't have enough unassigned fund balance to cover things that come up?
So, the unassigned fund balance requirement, if we did not have enough in the unassigned fund balance, we would have to compensate for that through raising taxation.
Thank you. Mayor, did you wish to weigh in on that?
Well, I appreciate the idea, because of course, we want the tax rate to be as low as we can. I do think this requires some discussion, because, for a couple of reasons. Number one, we, the bond rating agencies are always looking for a gradual increase in the overall fund balance. And if this were to reduce the overall fund balance from the, you know, as of June 25, from June 24, that could have a negative implication for, with the rating agencies. Number two, the, the problem you always have with this is that the following year, so if you reduce, we'll just say, let's use, let's, let's go with the $6 million, just, we're talking hypothetically. The $6 million that was proposed, well, you gotta, the following year, come up with the same number, at least. If you don't come up with, because, let's say the next, let's, let's just say the next year was zero, well, then the taxes go up $6 million before you even get to the budget. So, because now you don't have those funds buying down the tax rate. So, if you're going to raise or reduce this, you gotta be careful, and it should, I think, be done gradually. But these are, but it's, you know, it's within the realm of possibility, but we gotta think about, can we come up with $9 million next year, or else the taxes are going to go artificially high next year. So, it does require more discussion, I think, than just, well, let's amend. Sure, we all want a lower tax rate, but I mean, I think you, I think there are some longer-term implications that need to be discussed and understood. On the first question, I'm not sure, would this overall reduce the overall fund balance? I mean, that's an answer we'd have to give, we'd have to provide, and consider what the, what the effect of that might be, if that really is the case. So I think, if this is going to be considered, it should, I believe, should go back to the committee for, for some more analysis.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, if we feel that it requires more discussion, I have no problem going back to budget. I thought it was on tonight's agenda, because it was a timeliness issue. And that'd be the first question. The second is, I've been here 14 years, and I had a lot of CFOs tell us that it's extremely risky, because you could drive the tax rate 8 or 9, 10% next year, if we don't have the revenues to cover up what we're allocating this year out of that amount of money. So, that, that might be great for this year, but next year, it could have a huge effect on taxpayers. And I don't know if we want to do that risk, and if we need to go back to budget to get that more fully explained, that's fine.
Well, we want to get this resolved as soon as we can, but on the, but if, if a different number is going to be used, especially something significantly different, you know, if we're $6.5 million or $5.5 million instead of 6, I mean, you know, it's not that material. But this is, you know, the difference between 6 and 9 is significant. And, yeah, it'd be better to do it quicker, but if you're thinking seriously about 9 million, we really need to, you really, this really needs to be analyzed. So, the implications of it are fully understood.
Attorney Bowman.
Just so you all know, the ordinance that provides that your approval is necessary for this to take place, requires it be decided before the end of tonight's meeting. So, you may want to consider whether you want to adhere to that or not. One interpretation would be that if you don't act when the ordinance says you can act, the mayor can act independently of the Board of Alderman's approval. We've never run into that before. The other thing is, any long delay, you're going to start running into when the MS1 is due to the state, so that they can do their calculations and the tax rate be set. Now, I don't think we're running into deadlines yet, but if you don't do it tonight, next meeting's in two weeks, I don't know what you're going to do then. So, you may want to think about all that.
Alderman Goveya, I'm sorry.
I can, I'll yield back, the maker of the motion wants to speak.
Oh, I want to, if I could, ask through Uta Corporation Counsel, paragraph, paragraph C of, of the ordinance reads, "If Board of Alderman votes to use an amount of undesigned general fund balance to reduce the anticipated tax rate, which reduces the undesigned general fund balance below the minimum amount required by subsection A, which is 10%, then it is the policy it is the policy of the Board of Aldermen to restore the minimum undesigned general fund balance within a three-year period." So the way I read that and understood it is, even though this doesn't take it below the ten percent, if for some reason there was unforeseen circumstances that did take it, we would have a three-year grace period to get that level back up. We wouldn't have to do it all in one year. That's how I read it.
That's correct.
Okay.
Madam President.
All right, but that's correct. That's, that is what the ordinance says, but we are above the ten percent, and we're at eleven and a half or something like that. And what I'm addressing is not the ordinance, but if the gross amount of the designation, of the fund balances decline, that can have an implication for the tax rate. Even if we're above ten percent, we go from eleven and a half to eleven, that's just totally hypothetical, that could have an effect. So, and I can't answer the, I mean, right now, without looking at the numbers, without working with the CFO, I can't answer the question of whether this would overall reduce, you know, what effect this would have. So I think it does need some discussion and just can't be done immediately without analysis.
Alderman Goveya.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I'll support lowering that tax rate. I do think there are some questions that need to be answered for it. And I think one piece to the puzzle here is, and I'm not sure if anybody here knows it yet, do we know what we're running for a surplus this year?
Well, it's going to be, it's going to be significant, but, you know, we've got issues. You know, we need some money for the, for the healthcare again, and other areas where we may need to allocate money into some reserve accounts. So we could get into all that, but it's, but the trouble is, we can't do that right now, because we don't have the numbers in front of us. So that's why I'm saying if the, if something different than being recommended is seriously considered, you've got to think about the whole picture.
Thank you.
Alderman Senate.
Oh, thank you, Madam President. Attorney Bolton had actually touched upon what I had wanted to say already.
Okay. Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a question through you to Corporation Council. The portion of the ordinance, can you read the portion of the ordinance that says that we have to get it done tonight? Is it, does it read?
It's in the, it's in the analysis section of the ordinance itself. We've provided it to you in writing.
Okay, so you're talking about the resolution, not the ordinance that governs the?
Well, I'm talking about the ordinance that requires the resolution to be done prior to whatever it is, the second meeting in September.
Is it the second meeting or the first meeting in September? Second?
This is the second.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
And thank you for, thank you for that. I, I don't like it when the board decides on a whim to go, like, backtrack. I understand the motion in front of us to increase, you know, from six to nine million. I understand that. However, if we think that this requires more discussion and there becomes a motion to move this to the committee to discuss it or whatever, I think that's a dangerous precedent. Because what that will mean is that this board is ignoring its own ordinances. We're ignoring the own, our own rules that we put into place, and we put those rules into place for a reason. And if we want to change those rules, we should bring about an ordinance change that goes through the committee process, comes here, and is agreed upon by the majority of the board. To do it this way, if we were to do it this way, I'm not saying that that's what's on the table right now, but it has been discussed, that would signal to a bond agency, whoa, they're not, they're not paying attention to their own rules, they're just overriding their own rules. And if there was one thing, forget the going from six to nine million, if there was one thing that would, that would degrade our bond rating, that'd be it. That would be it. So I think, I think we ought to really figure this out this evening, because if we don't follow our own ordinances, that's going to be the trigger that's going to reduce our bond rating.
Alderman Tibo.
Thank you, Madam President. If we do decide this tonight, I mean, I'm going to be against it, because I think I would need more information to make sure that we can do this. I'm worried about the future. I'm worried about next year. If we give, oh, hey, guys, we gave a great tax rate this year. Okay, go. Hey, we did a great job for us. But then next year, we can't do this, and taxes go, tax rate goes way up, we're going to have to battle the people that are upset about that. And so although, I mean, I would love to give the lowest tax rate possible, love it, because I would love it for myself, because I pay a lot of taxes on my house, and it's small. But I would want more information before just doing it. It's, it's, it's not a bad choice to try to do that. I just, I would need more information. I would need to make sure the future is going to be okay, because we're here, well, maybe we're not here, I don't know. Some of us will be, some of us won't be, probably. Some definitely won't be here, the ones that, you know, like Alderman Jettie here, that's not running. But we're going to leave that next board with a potential issue next year, and that's the thing I'm concerned about. I'm not concerned that we're not giving enough, or giving too much, or whatever. I'm more worried about what's going to happen next year, because we're going to, this is going to be a problem every year. Things aren't going down, so that's how I look at it.
Alderman Jettie.
I think, I think my question's been answered.
Okay. Alderman Dow.
Yeah. If this did, right now, we have the highest bond ratings with all three bonding companies. If we lose that, going down even one level, it's going to cost us, the city, a lot more money than we're talking about saving on the tax rate, which will drive all of our projects more expensive because of the interest rates that'll be involved with losing a bond rating. We have the highest bond rating of probably any city in New Hampshire. If we put that in jeopardy, that's pretty severe. So that needs to be thought of. And just one other thing, if it goes back to committee, we will have to call a special budget committee meeting, because we don't have one scheduled for quite some time. And then we'll have to have a special Board of Aldermen meeting to address this, so just keep that in mind.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you very much. So I understand the need for information. The information that I'm using is the information that was given to us by the administration on the projected balance as of six thirty, twenty twenty-five, which was forty-seven million, one hundred seventeen thousand, six eighty-eight. Instead of the six, I applied the nine, which will take that down to thirty-eight million, one hundred seventeen thousand, six eighty-eight. I am not advocating that we break the rules. According to that math, if I take thirty-eight million, one one seven, six eighty-eight, and divide it into the general fund appropriations of three hundred sixty-one million, seventy-two thousand, eight sixty-eight, that's ten point five percent. It's a point five percentage rate above where we need to be. We can do it, and I'm advocating that we do do it. I'm not saying, I don't, I don't want to send it back to committee. I'm just trying to make the simple math here, and I'm, you know, there's, it's just a simple division problem, that's all it is, just finding out the percentage, and I just wanted to put that out there. I'm using the information that we're using to get to the eleven point four percent, so I'm just taking it a little bit lower. That's it.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate that response, and based on that, I can't support the ordinance, I can't support the amendment. And the reason being is that it, the mayor said it perfectly, if we put nine million towards it this year, then in order to stabilize it next year, you're going to have to put nine million towards it, and then nine million towards it, and nine million towards it, every year thereafter. Because the minute you don't do that, that, and you, let's say you do less, then you've got to find three million. Let's say so if we do nine million this year, and we do six million next year, we've got to find where that three million is coming from next year. So it becomes a next year problem. And then you're, what you're effectively doing is you're raising taxes on people next year. So I'm not going to support this, because I don't like, I'll, I'll be perfectly a hundred percent honest with you. I don't think, if I could go back in time to whenever the first Board of Aldermen applied any type of refund to the taxpayer, I would have told them, don't do it, because what you're doing is you're putting yourself in a perpetual hole. Because whatever you do, you have to offset it the next year in order to keep up with it. Because you're never going to have, and I mean, let's be real here, right? We're never going to have a budget that's flat. It's just not going to happen, right? Costs go up, inflation things escalate, so there's going to, salaries go up. So unless you cut dramatically the city budget to the point where we're laying people off, we're closing fire departments, things like that, unless we do that, costs are going to go up. So if we apply nine million instead of six million, we're going to have to do the same thing next year. And the problem with that is I don't know where we're going to find that, particularly because if we think the economy is bad now, all the forecasts say it's going to get worse and worse and worse. So I think we should be prudent, go with the six million this year, and, you know, when next year comes along, hopefully, we'll still have six million to put towards this problem next year.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I want to echo comments that have already been made about the escalating this to nine million. Since I've been on the board past eight years, if I remember correctly, we've gone from two percent to four percent to now six percent. To continue to bring this up is very disconcerting. Each year, we have to, as has already been said, so I really shouldn't be repeating, but we just have to continue doing that. And if I may, Madam President, ask Ms. Enright, the, that eleven point four percent and the amount that we need in the, the unassigned fund balance, that is a calculation of another amount. Is that not correct?
Thank you for the question. So if you're questioning if it's a calculation, yes, it is a calculation. It is eleven point four percent is the forty-one, the forty-one million is eleven point four percent of the three hundred and sixty-one million budget. That is the calculation.
Madam President?
Alderman Cle.
So that would mean next year, if the budget went up, the unassigned fund balance technically has to go up to continue with that certain percentage, correct? And more likely, the budget is going to go up even if we trim as much as we possibly can. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So there is a potential that if we bring it down so close, by adding this other three million dollars, we could almost hit that ten million dollars. I'm not saying that we would, that that would probably be an extreme thing, but that is always a potential. Year after year, we're trying to take nine million dollars to do this. Even though we have three years to pay it back, we keep digging this hole deeper and deeper and deeper. Is that correct?
Yes, that is a potential.
Thank you, Madam President.
Anyone else? Motion is to amend.
I do have, I think, an answer to maybe part of Alderman Goveya's question.
Okay, Mayor.
You were asking, someone asked over here about the surplus, or, you know. All right, so that the, there's going to be surplus that exceeds the, this nine million, but, or the six million, but here are the issues that need to be faced, you know, the larger ones. First of all, the benefits, you know, we need to shore up the Benefits Trust Fund. That's the money that is used to pay for health benefits, because health costs keep going up. School department has run into some problems. The special ed costs have greatly exceeded what was projected. So they're going to have to be made whole on that. Federal and state reductions have affected that, plus these out-of-district placements, where, you know, one, one child can cost hundreds of thousands of dollars for an out-of-district placement. SURF, the Capital Equipment Reserve Fund, is not fully funded. We budgeted, I think, two and a half million, but we need more than that. So some members of the board correctly have advocated that we include SURF in the budget instead of always doing it out of surplus, and, but this year, we sort of phased that in by budgeting two and a half rather than five or six, which is really the, the better number, the necessary number. So were this to be done without sort of looking at these various costs, and how much money there is, and what these, what these, what's going to be needed to meet these, these needs here? And you don't have enough then to pay for something like this? Then what? I mean, I think it's something that was, is worth discussing, but it would be helpful if it hadn't come up at the last second before the vote, you know, so that we could look at like, okay, well, what would this mean? And we could like, understand it. This is not an exact analogy, but a long time ago, people who said, who still are standing up here and styling themselves as conservatives, cut the sewer user fees very significantly. Great, people paid less then. But what they didn't take into account was there were huge capital costs coming, and now, 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 in this, this era, there hasn't been enough money to meet the capital costs because the, because money was not collected years ago. And so now, you know, there's a fifteen percent increase, because all these capital costs have to be met, and the, the rates were unrealistically cut some years ago, twenty years ago, fifteen years ago. So I'm not saying that's an exact analogy, because that's a lot more, that was ridiculous. This is, this is not. I mean, this is worth at least discussing. But we, you really should understand these numbers, and I can give you kind of the general outline here, but we, we don't know what the exact numbers are, and we really should understand that before making a significant departure based upon what the finance people have recommended.
Alderman Clemmons.
Can I ask a question through you to the mayor?
Yes.
We're doing six million this year because we did six million last year, correct?
I think we did a little more. Now, the, we might have done six and a half, but this is going to sound counterintuitive, but the most conservative approach is to do zero.
Correct.
That's the most, you know, why are we, why, you know, the most conservative approach is to, is to, is to strengthen the future picture as opposed to a short-term hit.
Yes.
The most conservative approach is to actually dial this gradually down, so that in the end, you don't need to buy the tax rate, and if some emergency comes up, you've got a lot of room to do it. So, and I, I'm sure there are people who will disagree with that statement, because it sounds conservative to cut the tax rate, but really, the most conservative thing is to, is to dial the number down a little bit. In the same way, it has been advocated that SURF be, be in the budget. That is the more conservative approach, which is correct. So that's why we're trying to feed towards that. That's one of the reasons we need surplus, at least some of the surplus now, because that's being phased in over two years. It was correct to advocate that that be put in the budget. Good point. It's the more conservative approach, rather than relying on surplus, put it in the budget. So again, I'm not saying I'm against it. I mean, let, but let's at least understand it. Either, I mean, I, you know, and of course, Attorney Bolton is saying this needs to be passed tonight. I really wasn't focused on the ordinance exactly, but in terms of the numbers and the finances, we need to understand what we're doing. we need to understand what we're doing.
Motion before us is to amend. Seeing no other further discussion, would the Clerk please call the roll, please?
Alderman O'Brien.
No.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
No.
Alderman Senate.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
No.
Alderman Tebow.
No.
Alderman Cleese.
No.
Alderman Dowd.
No.
Alderwoman Kelly.
No.
Alderman Wiltshire.
No.
Three yeas, 10 nays.
That motion fails. Motion before us is for final passage of R. 25-198.
This will require 10 votes.
By roll call, okay.
10 affirmative votes.
10 affirmative votes, okay. Seeing no discussion, that's the motion. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cleese.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
13 yeas, 0 nays.
That motion carries and Resolution 25-198 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-25-199, authorizing Pennechuck Waterworks, Inc. to issue bonds in an amount not to exceed $99 million.
Alderman Cleese.
Thank you, Madam President. A motion for final passage of R. 25-199 by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the Clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
No.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cleese.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
12 yeas, 1 nay.
That motion carries and Resolution 25-199 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-25-201, relative to the acceptance of 60, 650,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Safety into police grant activity fiscal year 2026, Greenwich Shield Substance Abuse Reduction Initiative Grant.
Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R. 25-201 by roll call.
Your first motion, is there discussion on that motion? Does Alderman Senate have his hand up? I can't tell. No, okay. You've heard the motion. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cleese.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
13 yeas, 0 nays.
That motion carries and Resolution 25-201 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-25-202, relative to the acceptance of $48,200 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Safety into police grant activity, New Hampshire Highway Safety Fiscal Year 2026 Grant.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R. 25-202 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage by roll call. Seeing none, would the Clerk call the roll, please?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
No.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cleese.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
12 yeas, 1 nay.
That motion carries and Resolution 25-202 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-25-204, relative to the acceptance of $68,250 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Transportation, State Fiscal Year 2026-2027, Capital Match Funds into Transit Grant Activity, Transit Capital Projects, and $534,638 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Transportation, State Fiscal Year 2026-2027, Operating Match Funds into Transit Grant Activity, Federal Transit Administration Operating Grants.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R. 25-204 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion? Seeing none, would the Clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
No.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cleese.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
12 yeas, 1 nay.
That motion carries and Resolution 25-204 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-25-209, authorizing Pennechuck Corporation and Pennechuck Waterworks, Inc. to increase the loan from the State of New Hampshire PFAS Remediation Grant and Loan Fund.
Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of R-25-209 by roll call. Would like to speak to that briefly.
Alderman Govea.
Thank you. So in front of you is the PFAS remediation loan. I do want to point out that it is going up. Last year, it was 11.45 million. It's going up to the 17.5 million, and that just, Pennechuck has been bigger since the merger, so the number just naturally will get bigger with more assets that they have to maintain. With that, I ask for everybody's approval of this.
You've heard the motion? Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the Clerk call the roll, please?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cleese.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
13 yeas, 0 nays.
That motion carries and Resolution 25-209 is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
None.
Business unfinished at previous meeting.
None.
New business resolutions?
None.
New business ordinances?
None.
Avert the general public comment. We have one person signed up, appears to have left. Remax by members of the Board. Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. I, I wrote down my words tonight so that I could keep everything straight, but I did want to do a quick aside before I read them. I consider myself very close to the Sky Meadow community, have considered a second home, and it's just been devastating since Saturday. I have spoken to a number of the employees and community members, and my heart just goes out to all of them in dealing with this tragedy. So there's lots of ways to support. I'll share some of that information, but, I'm going to read this. So the last few days have been the hardest I've ever faced in my 20 years in Nashua. My heart is broken, and I walk around with a pit in my stomach thinking about everyone who was affected by this violent and tragic act. The glimmer of hope in all this darkness is the kindness and selflessness I have seen in the aftermath of this senseless tragedy. From our first responders, who worked tirelessly to help every guest and employee get out safely, to our health workers and counselors who are helping those who witnessed this firsthand, it is clear to me that our community is strong, compassionate, and united. Unity is a word that has been front and center for me lately. It's something that I think every American wants more of these days. When others try to divide us, inflame hate, or turn up the rhetoric, we must resist. The only way Nashua heals from this is together, as neighbors, humans, and friends. I believe the same is true for this country. We simply cannot respond to violence by calling for more violence.
Alderman Dowd.
I just wanted to say that you all received these in, in your email correspondence today. There's dedication at Main Dunceblin-Burghill, those two elementary school projects, we completely renovated them, and I can say that the Joint Special School Building Committee will be returning some significant funds from these projects, which will help us overall in our bonding.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. First off, I want to start off with some good news. Alderwoman Timmons is home. She's watching us right now, so I just want to wish her the best. Can't wait to see her come back. We miss her here desperately, and I hope she gets, gets well soon, so. So yeah, I mean, it's been a tough couple of weeks in this country. I mean, obviously, the Charlie Kirk murder, the stuff that happened here in Nashua, even at UNE, where my son goes to school, there was a guy arrested for having some bomb material in the school, had to be in shelter. So it's been a crazy time, dark, dark time. You know, I live right up the street from that, probably a mile, and so, you know, my children are not as, as young as others, but they, you know, some of them have, I'm going to say some of them because I don't want to name which ones they are, but have anxiety issues. And so that was scary. I mean, the first stuff that came out was like 30 to 40 people, you know, were shot, and chaos was, was happening, two shooters running all over the place, and, you know, we're only a mile from the street or whatever. So it's, it's, it's in Ward 9, in Alderman Sullivan's Ward, but it's across the street from Ward 8. And so, you know, trying to, you know, lock the doors and be safe and all that was, it's scary, and everybody handles these things differently. Everybody handles grief differently. My heart goes out to the deceasers and the other two people that were, were shot, and everybody that was there that has to deal now with trauma. Just because you didn't get shot doesn't mean you're not having trauma from that, because obviously, it's, it's scary. I want to address the reason why I objected to this letter earlier. You know, there was a, there's an Alderman called out, and I'm going to name that Alderman. It's me. It's me. It's absolutely me. But if you look at my comments on Mel's pages, on Alderman Moran's pages, sorry, I've never belittled him once about his, the reaction that him and his family had to this event. I would never do that. I didn't call him like some of you did and some other people did. I'm only a mile away. I only heard from the Mayor and somebody at Maggie Goodlander's office, so I don't care. If people didn't reach out to me, that's fine. I'm okay. But like I said, everybody handles this stuff differently, right? But pivoting to the reason I think this letter came out, we had a meeting with the downtown businesses last week, and we heard from them. They weren't asking to meet with us. They were asking to meet with the Mayor. Some of us pushed that meeting, which is fine. I was fine listening to their concerns. I think it's important to listen to people's concerns in the city, and they told us how they're feeling, and I think it's okay to listen to them. And unfortunately, Alderman Moran, in my opinion, only my opinion, kind of dismissed them and went after them, and I didn't think that was the right form to start going after them. You can be humane to the unsheltered and be humane to the small businesses that run Main Street. You can do both. They're not mutually exclusive. So one comment that he made is that the businesses have rolled back some of their rhetoric. And so all I said was, what businesses? I'm curious, because what I'm hearing outside of that meeting is they have not rolled that back. And then he went on not to answer my question, and I asked many times, didn't get that answer. I said, you can message me privately if you don't want it out there, if you don't want the business's name out there. Didn't get that. And then he attacked me. He attacked what I do here in City Hall, I don't pass enough, put enough legislation through. But the thing with us nine Ward Aldermen, we do more than legislation. And all of you that are Ward, Ward Aldermen, no, and I'm not denigrating them at large because they have other responsibilities, but we hear from our constituents, and we get emails. I get emails every day, or calls, and we go out and we help them. Doesn't require legislation to have DPW go and fix a hole or fix something, right? But we have to do the work. So even though I'm not coming up with this, this grand, he called my big legislation the Zoom meeting that I, I stopped. Actually, I'll take more credit for the, the vet ones, because I think that's more important. But he said that was just adding on to a, a legislation that was already there. But in, at the same time, we have to care for all the citizens, sheltered, unsheltered, workers, you know, big business, small business, and he didn't have to go after them. And so that's, I honestly, I've talked to some of the small businesses since, and I know other people have, that I don't think anybody has rolled their rhetoric back. I think they're still having issues. They're struggling. He put out a, I'm going to give you 5,000 to the soup kitchen, all of you should do the same thing. Not every small business is Michael Buckley. Not all, every small business can just drop 5,000. We heard people, there were, some of them said they were struggling to stay in Nashua. I think it's important that we listen to them and try to come up with solutions for both our issues in the parks, and it wasn't just the small businesses, it was the Mine Falls Advisory Committee was talking to us as well. Why can't we listen to their problems? Why can't we try to help them? I'm not saying to put anybody in jail or round anybody up, but we must look at both these issues and try to help them. That's what we're here for. It's our problem. It's our solutions that we should come up with. So that's what this letter is. I think it's highly inappropriate, and so I objected to it. I don't think it's one that should have come before us, and I, I still object to it, so. Thank you, and again, great job with the police force. I got to thank them at the vigil, Alderman Cleese, Alderman Kelly, and whoever else had set up the vigil the other night. It was fantastic. Most of you guys were there. It was great to see everybody, and I really appreciate putting that out there because it really helped people to come together at a very tough time. I got to thank the police that were there, and I appreciate them doing that at such short notice, so thank you.
Alderman Jettie.
Thank you. So on a, a much lighter but important note as well, the, an example of the, of, of what a great city we have, the, the Nashua Rotary Club, of which the Mayor, I, and Alderman Sullivan are members, is having a service project this Saturday to help clean up Mine Falls Park. And I mention it mostly to encourage all the other service organizations, of which we have many in Nashua, to, you know, to consider doing something similar, to, to, you know, volunteer to help do something for the city to continue making it the good city that it is. Thank you. Thank you.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to share my thanks with Nashua's first responders, also with the emergency management department, and the staff here who did an excellent job handling everything last Saturday. It was a chaotic, it was a chaotic scene for sure, tragic, tragic scene. And, you know, it's, you always hope that these things are not going to happen in your backyard, in your neighborhood, in your city, in your town. But, the nice thing to know, at least in Nashua, is that we have competent, caring people running the show here, who plan for this kind of thing, and who show up in the time of need and enact. And our fire department really stepped up, really stepped up. They helped so many people who were, you know, one woman had a gunshot to the face, from my understanding, who they helped. But also the surrounding towns, too, that came to our aid and the mutual aid that we have. You know, we often, sometimes in different committees here, we, the question gets asked, you know, "Why, why do we spend money on mutual aid, you know, to other towns and things like this?" You know? That's, last Saturday, that's why. That's why. Because Tingsborough, I was in Tingsborough with my wife, and we, we heard the ambulances and the fire trucks and everybody from Tingsborough rushing up to the scene, you know, leaving their town. And then some other town from further down covers Tingsborough, and it just goes and goes, right? And that's the kind of thing that I think sometimes in these situations goes overlooked, and I don't want that to be lost, because it's an important part of what made that situation go from being chaos to something where they quickly apprehended the person and took care of everybody who was at the scene. So again, I just wanted to give my thanks to all of those first responders from not only Nashua, but everywhere. My condolences to the victims. And, you know, on a personal note, although it didn't touch me personally, you know, I take pride in Nashua. I was born and raised here. I love this city. And, you know, we, we will overcome this. We will. We will overcome this, and we will get on the other side of this, and, you know, the sun will come out. Thank you.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you. I think that a couple of things that I wanted to touch on, obviously, to echo all of my colleagues. You know, I put Saturday night up right there on the shelf for me in my lived experience with September 11th, with the Marathon bombings, and now this. And then, and unfortunately, in our modern era, there's a litany of other events that you can put right up there. But, to me, it was, you know, we were at the Performing Arts Center that night, and my wife texted me. She said, "You need to come home." And I said, "Okay." And just to be outside and on Main Street, it was completely empty, and the helicopters and, and all of that. It's an experience that I hope I never have to live through again. And then, you think in the moment, but then, the day after, you think of all the people that are touched. And when I say touched, I mean negatively touched by it. And I think to myself, and I'm just saying this out loud, if you're Sky Meadow, how does that, how does a place like that recover and move forward? And I, and I would say that overall in our society, while I think there is a lot of negativity going on, I do think as a people and a population, I think we're pretty resilient. And I hope that Nashua, and I think that Nashua is very resilient, and will move forward from this and learn from it. And it does amaze me at the professionalism of our first responders. I think that we are very, very lucky to have them. On Monday, I did a ride-along with Nashua PD to look in, to look at the different sites around the city. I wanted to dig in. I couldn't, I couldn't be at the meeting. I was traveling for work. I watched it, and then I re-watched it, and then I reached out to Nashua PD, and I said, "I want to get in there. I want to see it. I want to, I want to experience it and better understand it." And I know that it was said by my colleague in Ward Eight about the police having more teeth to help them. You know, I was informed that there is some legislation that's working its way through that will help them do their job and help them manage the situation. It's my hope that we see that as soon as we can, to help out the situation and get everybody the help that they need. I think that, I don't know how to land this plane. It's really hard, but I'm just gonna say, I think Nashua is a very resilient city, and I think that people look to us, and they model our behavior. And just take that with you as you leave here tonight. Thanks.
Alderman Lopez.
I just want to offer my condolences to the DeCesar family and all those who were affected by the tragedy on Saturday. I did want to just touch on trauma, because we talk about trauma, and we talk about having sympathy for it, but sometimes we don't necessarily recognize that when people are directly involved in it, they may, they may come out a little bit more emotionally volatile. They may come out swinging. They might fixate on nuances. And if we're going to talk about understanding and supporting the trauma, then we have to recognize that people process it in different ways, and that may even include some of our colleagues. I know Alderman Moran and I have not agreed on many issues or approaches to issues, but I also know he was there on Sunday afternoon, meeting with people and doing whatever he could to make a difference, because he needed a way to figure out how to express that. And he has the professional background to be able to do that. I'm appreciative of all of the other first responders and our city's mobilized, organized approach to that experience and that crisis, but I think as a city, as a state, and as a nation, we fall very short in providing meaningful supports after. You know, in the 60 to 90 days period, that's when people are really going to be feeling like there's no longer a license to feel trauma, when there isn't really an expiration date on it. People can struggle with it for years. This wasn't just one event that nobody had ever experienced like this before. Some of the people that were present in that room or involved with it have experienced things like this before. And this brought it all back in completely different ways. Some of the people that weren't even directly involved, that were just, you know, maybe in the neighborhoods or in the area, have experienced their own trauma. This brings it back. So, I think we do have to be a little bit delicate with how we approach those, these kind of situations as leaders. On a different note, I do recognize that many different people use the downtown area, and sometimes there's different perspectives on, you know, who's got the most emergent need and how to navigate those different problems. And so, in the spirit of listening, if Alderman would like to learn more about the intervention services and the supports, we've done a lot of work here in the city, or in the Board of Aldermen in trying to support our local nonprofits and intervention systems, but there's a lot going on in the continuing care. And they're not having it any better than we are when it comes to federal support or policies or the overall climate in, in supporting them during their first response to this kind of a crisis. Because the things that are happening downtown aren't unique to Nashua. They're happening in nationwide and regionally, and we have people on the front lines that need our support, too. On October 1st at 9:00 AM, the Continuing Care meets right upstairs. I would, I've invited everybody in this, this room to come and hear what they're trying to do, what they're achieving, because they are achieving a lot, what their struggles are. I mean, if we are going back and forth over how to, you know, arrange our budget and make our ends meet, try doing it in one business day, because you just found out that HUD needs you to apply and have your entire plan laid out much faster than, than they indicated. There's a lot of things that are moving around in the nonprofit and human services field that deserve our support, and there are solutions to the problems that are being brought up that I think we all need to be aware of and engaged in. And further, if people are really, really passionate about listening, Public Health is looking for volunteers for the warming station. Some of us on the board did volunteer in the past, and we learned a lot about who exactly is a Nashua and what a Nashua resident looks like. So I would invite people to investigate that, too, and find out if it fits your schedule. If you can't do everything, and if you don't have your $5,000 to match whatever, then give a nickel, or give your time. Find a way. But I think, as the previous speaker pointed out, we are a resilient community. Crisis takes many forms, and we can do things to come together to try to resolve these in a ways that does recognize business owners and residents and taxpayers and homeless people. I just think we need to focus more on coming together rather than what is pulling us apart. Thank you.
Anyone else? I would also like to send my condolences to the DeCesar family. Oh, let me, let me go to Alderman Senate. I'm sorry I missed you, Alderman Senate.
Well, that's quite all right, Madam President. Most of my colleagues have already touched upon what I want to do, what I wanted to speak on briefly, but I just wanted to, to join everyone in extending my most heartfelt condolences to the DeCesar family. What happened this weekend is unthinkable. It's, you know, we often say that it can't happen here, but now it has. And I think how we move on from this is what defines us as a city. Alderman Clemmons had spoken to, to the topic of mutual aid. And I'd point out that just days after this on Monday, there was a similar incident taking place just beyond our borders in Brookline, and Nashua was out there rendering assistance when they needed it. And, and that's how community is built. Community is built when we can lean on each other, when we can support one another, and that's what we're going to need to do going forward to come out of this stronger and more supportive as a city. And I, I think as a board and as leaders in our community, it's incumbent upon us to lead by example. We've experienced a delicate number of weeks in this, in the past few, you know, months, really. But the country is hurting, the state is hurting, and the city is hurting now. And how we conduct ourselves and how we treat one another, even when we disagree, I, I think is going to be how we come out of this. And so I just hope everybody, you know, we've heard a lot about toning down the rhetoric lately. I, I hope we can all do that a little bit, so that we're, we're not worse off for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Senate. Again, my condolences to the DeCesar family. I had a family friend who was in the restaurant on Saturday night. She evacuated and hid under a car. So, you know, it hits everyone. I mean, it touches everyone somehow. As Alderman Sullivan brought up, 9/11, I had just dropped my son off 10 days earlier at George Washington University. Couldn't, couldn't get in touch with him, because all the lines were jammed, and he's right, right across from the Pentagon. So, you know, it touches all of us, and I hope we can get through this together, without division. Please. All right. Committee announcements. Alderman O'Brien?
Yes. Tomorrow night, Wednesday night, 24, at 7:00 PM here in the Aldermanic Chamber, will be an Infrastructure Committee meeting. And Madam President, through you, can I ask the question to Alderman Senate, because he's heavily engaged with some of the pending legislation for tomorrow night? Alderman Senate, do we need to set up Zoom for you tomorrow night?
In one fashion or another, I'll be available for you. I'll let Donna know by lunchtime tomorrow.
Yeah, good. Okay. And I'll try to learn the world of Zoom in the meantime. Thank you.
I'll have it for you.
God bless you. God bless you.
Alderman Sullivan.
I did want to say, just to reiterate what Alderman Jettie mentioned, but the Mine Falls Trail Day is Saturday, September 27th. I'm not on that committee, but I'm gonna be that day. So hopefully, everyone can join. Cleanup, 9:00 AM at the Lincoln Park entrance on Saturday. Just reading from the website. Thanks.
Alderman Dowd.
Thursday, Joint Special School Building Committee, 7 o'clock at Nashua High North.
Okay. Alderman O'Brien.
Madam President, I would like to make the motion that the September 23rd, 2025 meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned by roll call.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Gavella.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
No.
You're already home. That's not fair.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Thirteen yays, one nay.
That motion carries, and we are adjourned at 9:07 PM. Thank you, everyone.